Okay, we will open, open up the planning board meeting for July twenty fifth. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid manner pursuant to the general laws. Uh, anybody can record it, that is fine. You just need to let us know. Anyone recording tonight? Okay, uh, we will be recording as well and putting it on the planning board website. Uh, seven o'clock P M town planners reporting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Here, here we go. Okay, uh, first item of business. The plate submitted by Mr. Jim Sullivan. Uh, as we see at the last meeting was responded to on last Thursday, we got this provided to. Uh, Attorney General's Office as well as the town for. Uh, excuse me, Attorney General's Office, the county clerk, um, as well as the complaint. Uh, I had a meeting last week, uh, we called a preliminary meeting with conservation and T P W. Representatives from a company called Soul Source. Um, they, uh, are a solar development, uh, company, one of the. Factors that have been, that has played into considerations here in Southwick over time, uh, is the limited capacity. Uh, uh, the substation on the south side of town. Um, so this group was looking, uh, at the potential for the development of multiple. Uh, arrays on, uh, multiple parcels in order to justify or offset the costs necessary for upgrades that substation. Uh, that would be part of their burden. Um, so they came on the contest for two sites, uh, forty-three Will Palmer Road and seven eighty-seven College Highway. Um, and with some light discussions about other properties off Greenville Road. Uh, at this point in time, it was just a, we call it a concept level, uh, discussion. We needed to see greater, uh, commitments from the landowners. But at the same time, wanted to just, uh, we'll say, take the temperature. Uh, questions from my end really related to, uh, infrastructure. Now, did they, at this time, was there any, you know, suggestion of, you know, battery energy storage or any energy storage at this site? Um, this was all, uh, both panels, uh, and strictly the infrastructure training for the energy to the correct. Uh, okay, so then I say in business. For several meetings now, we've discussed, uh, a letter that was submitted to the select board. With concerns over incomplete infrastructure at the Noblesy subdivision. Select Board Member Jason Barone has been keeping me updated, uh, on roughly a weekly basis. Uh, to this as, uh, as a resident in that area, he's been an effective, uh. Means of communication only is on between the, the developer. Uh, and I suppose the source of these concerns, uh, so even as recent as today, I received an update in terms of. What is being done out there, um, and ensuring me that some measure of progress is required and also achieved. Last, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, lastly, uh, just a quick reminder so that we keep it on our radar, uh, a second point of discussion. With Mr. Barone revolved around the. Cannabis by law amendments process. Uh, where we left off, uh, we decided that it would be undertaken, um, as a public hearing. Uh, here with the board and not spun off into a longer process with a subcommittee. Uh, but having said that much, I have yet to hear any, um. Further confirmation of a effective meeting. I know that timing of holding a public hearing was of particular concern. So I just wanted to mention that we'll keep it on the radar, uh, and also on the radar. Uh, are our subdivision regulation, uh, amendments. Uh, where we're going to address a few loopholes that we've seen, uh, over the past year, adopt some standardized information, uh, for forms. Uh, and look at stormwater amendments as well. So just thoughts, uh, to keep this in mind, uh, I would like to put both of those, uh, just those standing items under a routine business so they don't fall through. For that, I'll turn to you, Mr. When is our August? August fifteenth.
All right, thank you. All right, um, seven oh five public comment. Does anybody have anything for the board tonight that is not on the agenda? Yes, sir. Uh, yeah, just put your, uh, name and address, please, for the record.
Roger Cotaldale, here at Four Field. I'm here representing my daughter, Sharon Antico, who lives at three sixty-three Norwood Street. We own property and I'll say we because I use the owner's, but I told her to her. You're trying to find out what the status is on the Kellogg something kind of place. Now, it's been closed down, the business has been closed down for over five years. And, uh, it's an R forty residential zone. Now we understand that, uh, it's being leased or sold to another construction company. Now, right now, we see that there's oil tanks and gasoline tanks being taken out of the ground. Right next to a wetland. Where the tanks are, there's a little stream that goes right. And there's oil and gasoline coming from that property, which goes through her property. Where she has livestock, there's oil stains and there's horse and animal drinking out of the water. So I'm trying to know what is the operating status with this property? Has it been sold? There is a sign on there saying it's operated by the very construction.
All right, so I don't know a- anything about it, um, but what I would suggest is this. Um, and I, I'm gonna volunteer the town planner to some degree if you need to have him help you out to the, to the right person, but. Um, you know, the, the issues you raise are enforcement issues, uh, potentially, and so I would be talking to the building inspector about it. Uh, which is right down the hall, right here. If you come here during the day, he's right in.
I've already been to him.
Okay, um, I mean, I could tell you that, um. Without knowing more, just generally, if it is a property that is zoned residential. And it was previously used commercial, you know, prior to the zoning bylaws coming into effect. Um, it is a pre-existing non-conforming, uh, but they, and I think it's two years, is that right? You have to have resumed the, you know, you can, you can take a break from the use, but you have to have resumed it within two years. So if it was, if that use was discontinued for two years or more, they can't continue that same use. Uh, that non-conforming use in that zone. So that's the general law. Um, you know, I'd have to know more about the situation and hear what everybody says to figure out whether. It, the use is gone, but it's an issue that I would be talking to the town planner and the building inspector about, and they can kind of guide you. Um, and look into what the situation is.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Well, also, the question would be, could that, is a property operate with another permit from the planning board? Would they have to be?
If it's a residential property, if it's a residentially zoned property, they would not have the ability to get a special permit for the uses that you're kind of talking about. Uh, you know, you'd have to look at the bylaw, but generally, you're not gonna get a business or commercial use on that property in that zone.
Well, right now, there's something tank trucks being parked there and. Some trucks and stuff that are being used, which are, from what I understand, which is leased from the Kellogg family.
Yeah, and I, again, I say.
That's what we're bad here.
Yep, and I, you know, without knowing more, I really can't tell you.
We need to know.
Well, you're telling me your side of it, uh, you know, I'm assuming that the. The property owner or the person leasing it may come and have a different side of it. Um, so I'd have to know more about that. I'd have to look at what the property is. Ensure, ensure how it's owned, ensure, you know, what's been filed with the, with the town. Uh, there's a lot more that could go on that to look into it. That's more enforcement and that's more the building inspector's job than the planning board. The planning board doesn't. Okay, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other public comments for the board tonight? Mr. Mothen.
All right, Doug Mothen, if I didn't place, I think it was about nine months to a year ago, I had brought the year toward. The fact that Lopori Drive, I think it's totally lame, were part of the subdivision, but those roads were never accepted. And I wanted to have, uh, request that the planning board look at the process to get those subdivision roads. Finally accepted along the lines of what we had been done on previous boards over the last twenty years or so. And, uh, so I make sure it gets tracked under our whole business and something like that.
Okay, we'll do.
Secondly, I believe it's also Mr. Doug's birthday, so.
Thank you, Doug.
Yeah, should I wait until the recording started when I wish them happy birthday? So, uh, any other public comments tonight for the board? Okay. Seven ten, one fifty-nine Berkshire Avenue. Continued public hearing. Um. I don't see. Derek, but it sounded like you had made some progress. But if you want, maybe I'm wrong on that, but if you wanna give your report, that would be great.
We're fine, uh, we'll call just, just the facts and not to get into section. We have what is a. What is the closest, uh, to a, to call complete submittal that we've seen in a long time? Randy Brown and I, uh, reviewed the documents in detail this afternoon. There are some remaining comments that I will have to submit to Mr. Hale. But the outcome of, uh, my deflection, Randy, was positive. So in light of all that, we are in the seat of a continuous request, um, that I coordinated with Mr. Hale.
Um, and is he? Tell me your thoughts on time frame. Um, I mean, I, well. I'm gonna put it on for the next meeting no matter what, but are we thinking that there's gonna be a substantive discussion at the next meeting? Are we for that point?
Yes.
Okay.
With, with one percent, if the comments, if we have a response to the comments, then yes.
All right. Um, so do I hear a motion to continue one fifty-nine Berkshire Avenue to seven ten on August fifteenth?
Dave's been so moved.
Sorry.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Dave's been, I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thor, and I.
Okay. Brings us to seven fifteen, six sixty-two A College Highway, continued public hearing.
This project is currently in the midst of a clear review for conservation matters. Uh, estimated to take, uh, what, three to six weeks is what I have in correspondence, and so I do have a continuous request from the applicants. Although they suggest that three to six week timeframe, uh, earlier. Uh, in order to come correspondence, they noted that they had initiated some design changes, um, to have discussions with the fire chief. Um, so I don't see any need to push it beyond August fifteenth for continuous. In the event that they have answers, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay, so we can put it on again for August fifteenth. Um. I am just gonna, why don't, do I hear a motion to continue six sixty-two A College Highway to seven fifteen on August fifteenth?
Dave's been assembled.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Dave's been, I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thor, and I.
All right, um. Have a little fine voice.
The one we did, uh, a bunch of me, let's see, we managed that.
That works for me. Um, why don't we discuss? Or have up the Tilkon. Earth excavation special permit renewal.
You can, I'm not sure what the plan, or.
I'm on it. How are you?
I'm good. How are you this morning?
Good.
Okay, you're the chair, if that's okay. Uh, for the record, Kevin Johnson, close Johnson and Miller, civil engineers in Rutherford, Connecticut. I think you're all.
Give us one minute. I'm gonna have him bring it up so that the folks online can take a look at it before you start tossing.
Sure.
Um, and then you can go right ahead. All right, go for it.
Again, for the record, Kevin Johnson, close Justin and Miller, uh, civil engineers in Rutherford, Connecticut. I think you're all familiar, uh, with the site. Um, direction north is to the top of the sheet, Hudson Drive and the cul-de-sac is to the bottom. The black outline, uh, represents the location of the solar array that was previously approved by this board. Um, we just layered that in as reference. Um, and if you're aware, the excavation to the north, um, that, that's been complete. Uh, this area of the Tilkon site was previously restored, it got re disturbed with stockpiles and, and such related to this activity. Uh, now that that's complete, it's proposed to restabilize, restore this area. There's also an area in the center here primarily on parcel what we call two B, uh, which is also slated for stabilization. Um, in twenty twenty-three, there are still, uh, materials in this area of the site, which. Tulkon does plan on removing at some point in the future, but not immediately. So again, that's why we're, um, proposing to stabilize that. Um, monitoring well data, uh, was support, uh, submitted along with the engineering report. Um, they're very consistent with other years, uh, I believe, uh, monitoring well, uh. And this is number eighteen, uh, was about point two feet lower, uh, than twenty twenty-one. Nineteen was about point two eight feet higher, so very consistent. Uh, the surety bond was renewed again until January of twenty twenty-four. Um, the one thing that we would like to ask the board. Again, with this monitoring well located as such, uh, the haul road's gonna get relocated once this is constructed. Um, obviously, that monitoring well will be removed, um. I guess Tilkon is basically asking, um, not to have to reinstall that one monitoring well. Again, we do have, uh, this one right here proximity to this parcel two B. So we would ask for consideration on that.
What, um. What other? How many monitoring wells are there?
Probably three.
No, there's two, eighteen and nineteen. Um, one of these was accidentally removed during excavation. That was probably. Gosh, fifteen to twenty years ago, and that one was reestablished, and I believe it was nineteen. But I've been doing this a good many years and I've only been aware of two.
Um, just trying to go back a little quickly, I.
Chris Costello, also with me from Tilkon, only aware of two.
Um, and I maybe have a confusion this in my head with the other ones.
The shaker, uh, forms.
Um, as far as, cause there was an issue with that one as far as, uh, monitoring wells that were. Um, put out of service and then we had to have them reestablished. Am I right on that, John?
That's correct.
But that's not just one.
That's correct as well.
Okay. All right. And when was the last time this was renewed?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
Beautiful time.
Please. Rivers to last.
That's probably why my memory is flipped around on these things. Um, okay, um. Tell me again the two monitoring wells, so I have it in mind. Right, there it is. Thank you. I couldn't find the other one.
And this one falls right within the array area, so that would get removed anyways.
Correct. Okay. Um, before I turn it over to the board, anything else, um, that you're requesting as it relates to renewal?
Everything else, no, that's it.
Okay. Um, any comments from the board? Nothing. Um, any issues with the, um. Having only one monitoring well at this point in time? Okay. Um. Now, one that's gonna remain is just below the area where the work is really being.
Well, that, that's the, the area where there's still material, which at a future date, they would like to take out, so right, that, that's right.
Is the plan to keep this open or is the plan to restore it? Complete it and then at some other point in time come in for a new permit, just so I understand where this is going.
Well, I think right now it's proposed to restore the disturbed areas on the Tilkon parcel.
Yep.
Keep this basically as reserved, continue to renew. I mean, it's conceivable they could take some of this material out in the next two years. Otherwise, they would come back again, you know, to maintain that renewal.
All right.
I don't think they would let it lapse and come back for a new permit.
I'm sorry, which, which location was that, uh, material that in the next two years you mentioned?
You've been there.
Basically, that parcel two B.
Okay, um, anything else from the board? All right. Um, do I hear a, um, motion to? Renew the, uh, earth excavation special permit for. Um, the Tilkon property on Hudson Drive.
Yeah, Dave's been assembled.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Dave's been, I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thor, and I.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You as well.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Um. Routine business. While we're then for seven thirty. Uh, master plan advisory committee update, Mr. Smith.
Yep, um, we unfortunately did not have any master plan advisory committee meeting last week as planned.
You're coming out.
I didn't call you out. Uh, but, uh, the, the subteams are still working on their respective chapters and vision statements thereof, and the vision statements are being fed to. Uh, couple members of the board are gonna try to massage them to be of all of one voice and aligned with the high level vision, so. That, and I don't believe we set on the next meeting date.
It should be, or we from Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah, have the treads on those tires while you're down there.
He's tried to be.
All right. Um, minutes. Everybody got a chance to look at the June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes? Anything to add to that that hasn't already been added? As you're here in motion to, a brief minutes for June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Dave's been assembled.
Okay.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Dave's been, I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thor, and I.
All right. Um, July eighteenth, these extensive minutes. Uh, so everybody had a chance to review these. We're here in motion to, um. Approve the minutes for July eighteen.
Dave's been assembled.
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Dave's been, I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thor, and I.
All right. Well, I still, but. Um. What was the first? Planning board member comments? Oh, just as a general. Yeah, if we have anything else, anybody on the board have anything that they wanted to bring up to the board this evening? Okay. All right, um. I was in production.
We, so we kept that on, uh, the agenda, probably didn't, I just, um, we filed on the routine business, but, uh, just coming out of the last meeting. The suggestion rather the question was asked by Ken Comer at E P P C as to who would be receiving. Uh, that, thinking about timing, uh, and sequence of the master plan advisory committee, uh, seems that there will be sufficient overlap. With the master plan advisory committee, that as suggested at a June, last June meeting. Um, that they'll be able to, uh, receive that document. Uh, so that when it's presented to the planning board, it, uh, will have been reviewed. Uh, I'll also note that, uh, I'll be speaking with Ken to see if there are any, you know. Further, uh, engagement opportunities with the housing authority. For this, for lack of a better term, it functions more in what we call a business capacity to administer, um, those needs, uh, facilities here in town. So, uh, some of the outreach meetings, uh, had, well, uh, limited, uh, participation, so I wanna make sure that, uh. Ken, in his effort, as it, uh, comes forward, uh, has, takes advantage of any opportunity, um, to present that to that authority as well.
Okay. All right, but that's. You're moving forward with, and we're trying to coordinate that and if it's. On track to coordinate.
It is on track to be coordinated.
Thank you for beautifully designed.
We're gonna sum it up that way. All right. That takes us to seven thirty, nine Wally Way, public hearing for the codes seventy-two hundred plus or minus square foot industrial building. Special permits, site plan table and wellhead protection, didn't, didn't special.
Hey, everybody. Good evening. I'm not sure what the best spot is to set up the, uh, is there any preferred?
Um, I would, yeah, probably put it over there just so that you keep the view of those folks so that they could see it as well.
We'll do my best to try and orient it to maximum number of individuals can see. Uh, my name is John Mason. I'm here from Arlevic Associates, uh, on behalf of our client, Mr. Lewis Forelli, uh, Southwick Electric. Um.
And I'm gonna hold you for one minute while I read the public notice and, um, then we can go forward. Um. So, notice is hereby given in accordance with the provisions of Master and Reloading Chapter forty-eight, section eleven at the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday. July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty P M via Zoom and in the land use hearing room at four fifty-four College Highway South of Mass. An application by Southwick Realty and Management LLC. Care of Mr. Lewis A. Forelli for a special permit, site plan approval and wellhead protection. District special permit for property located at nine Wally Way in the industrial restricted zone, wellhead protection district. Property shown on current access map, forty-nine, parcel eleven. The applicant proposes to construct a seventy-two hundred plus or minus square foot industrial building with off-street parking and other site improvements in accordance with the code of Southwick zoning by law, chapter one eighty-five, sections nine, ten. Nineteen, twenty-two, and thirty. Zoom information is provided. A copy of the application plans may be inspected by contact in the town manager on Goddard at his phone or email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the matter should hear the time and matter designated by the garden, their person, Southwick Planning Board. Okay, uh, go right ahead, sir.
And apologize for jumping the gun again. My name is John Mason. I'm here from Arlevic Associates, uh. On behalf of our client, Mr. Lewis Forelli, uh, the owner of the Southwick Electric, um. As mentioned in the introduction, uh, that you just read, our client is proposing the construction of the seventy-two hundred square foot prefabricated metal building. Um, on the property that he currently owns and operates his, uh, electric, uh, contracting business out of. Um, there are currently two, uh, one-story comparable, uh, buildings located on the site. Uh, we are proposing to. Construct, uh, that prefabricated metal. Uh, we are proposing to construct uh, that prefabricated metal building at the rear of the property. Um, and you don't get a great sense of the location, but this is located far north of the end of Wally Way. On the cul-de-sac, uh, there's a very large drainage easement to the north of the property that um. We are proposing to tie the stormwater drainage in, which I will discuss momentarily, um. The existing site, uh, if the rear is paved, we're proposing to expand the paved parking area to accommodate the new building. There would be the construction of, uh, I believe it's a total of twelve parking spaces, including a handicapped accessible space at the rear. Of the proposed building, um, and the stormwater drainage uh, was proposed uh. And the site plans before you this evening was going to uh, flow from the high point at the uh, front of the building. Uh, would have sheet flowed to the uh, rear edge of the parking lot where it would have been conveyed into the existing um. Stormwater uh, detention basin via a surface uh. Um, drainage swale, if you will, and similarly run off uh, from the door to the end of the building. Uh, would have been conveyed in a similar swale into the existing um, stormwater drainage system. Um, we received comments uh, around noon today, um, addressing the proposal, we were asking for a waiver um, for stormwater review. Um, that was not uh, amenable to the town uh. Re- review staff, so um, we've been asked to uh, you know. Revise the plans, but you know, given the the late date, uh, which we received the comments, we had no way to to attempt to address the concerns of of the. Professional staff in the town here, so uh, you know, certainly we understand the the reasoning behind it, but uh. You know, the thought was that it was uh, somewhat minimal uh, addition of uh, impervious area to the site. Uh, you know, adding it to a a extremely large basin that uh, my knowledge operates just. Perfectly well and it's very well drained, but um, you know, again, we are uh, certainly receptive to and and plan on the. Addressing the concerns that have been uh, passed along to us just earlier today.
So. I guess the first. Question that I have before I kind of turn it over and see if John had been and and the board uh, is what's the use of the property? Of the proposed building?
Um, again, it's a, it's an expansion of the existing use of the property, it's a Southwick Electric, uh, you know, they're electrical contractor. Um, as I understand it, uh, Mr. Barelli uh, can probably speak to this more, more um. Uh, directly than I can, but uh, my assumption is that, uh, you know, he is uh, in need of exist, you know, expanding is the existing uh. Property, um, would prefer to stay in this location, would prefer as a small business owner to uh, continue to operate in the the town of Southwick. And uh, feels that this is the best way to go about achieving that end. Not sure if you have any further uh, information you'd want to add about the particulars.
Um, basically, all we're doing is expanding it, trucks, we have too many trucks. And to leave them outside, we've already broken into three or four times. But we want to keep them inside, to do that, we need a bigger building, and we want to rent the pack without jobs at the cost.
Okay, but there's no proposed tenant for the part that's being rented.
We know, we don't have anybody that, like contractors is what we're looking for. Like right now, we have Spotlight Graphics in one, one of them, and WGI in the other one.
Okay, and I have to go back and look at your permit for. Well, actually, I can't, do you have a, is there a special permit on that property?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, with the the issue being over um, the wellhead. You know, it does limit what can go in there and what the uses can be, um, might say uses, I mean.
Looking at taking that space. One of them was. Basically, they come in, buy material, put their stamp on it and send it back out. And another one is puts on the Garmin radar detectors and boats. Those two have been looking at it.
Okay. All right, um, as long as you understand there, there will be. Correct, there will be conditions that are attached to any permit that would limit uh, to some degree what can go in there. All right, John, um, was there anything you wanted to? Add based on your review and discussions?
Uh, I will just note, uh, let's see. That Chief Stephen Alex submitted a review letter, um, that he would like to, you know, carefully keep an eye on, we'll call the. Building's footprint, uh, because uh, where we are. Uh, it's it's beginning to toe the line, we just wanted to, he was advising, um. The advocate to be careful about that, I've had no further concerns. Uh, safety officer uh, does not see an issue with the proposal. As uh, Mr. Masek noted. GPW did share a series of comments I'm happy to run through, uh, if you'd like, uh, some of them related to stormwater.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, we're in Brown Rights. Uh, and I'm sorry, this was yesterday afternoon, forwarded today.
I did not see them till today.
Exactly, I I didn't, I didn't let you see them until today, uh, but nonetheless, uh, so here we are, um. The advocate requested a waiver from the stormwater, Southwick Stormwater Permit, the DPW does not believe this project should qualify for a waiver. Uh, referring to chapter one eighty three, paragraph four eight five. I believe that's what uh, looks at a project uh, in its entirety. This case, one that already has uh, sort of permitted, uh, has stormwater approval, uh, but we are expanding upon that, uh, so. Uh, you don't have to trip that one inch threshold. In order to be required to uh, look again at stormwater. Although hopefully, the existing basin out there has more than enough capacity to simplify the program. Mr. Brown then notes, chapter one eighty five, section twenty-two, paragraph, uh, let's see, I one E. Requires a minimum ten foot of separation between excavation and annual high groundwater table. What is the elevation of the annual high groundwater table and how does it compare to the elevation of proposed excavation of the new building's services? Third question says a site plan should revise for the location of the proposed water service, including size and material. The new water service should be separate from the services that supplies other two buildings on the property connected to the water main on the street. Meters can be the meter pit located just outside the cul-de-sac. Further, verify the building will require uh, fire protection, suppression system. Item four, site plan should be revised for location, size, and elevation of the new onsite septic system. I believe uh, for this plane shown diagram.
That is correct, we get to obtain percolation tests for the site, but we anticipate no difficulty in doing so.
Uh, in his last comment says the foundation permit should be secured from DPW prior to starting construction. Water service application and transferment. Um, and I have just a couple of questions if you don't mind uh, me asking. Okay, I appreciate the clarification uh, on use, uh, and that I think was probably the. First one that I wanted to weigh. So, as a facility that offers. Uh, parking for vehicles. Um, uh, both for your uses and for prospective tenant out there, my understanding that that's going to require. Uh, some some method of capturing um. Uh, through for for through for drain network. Um, unlikely to a tight tank since we're over the agricultural district, uh, so I wanted to, we uh, have some dialogue. At a Brooklyn meeting perhaps, uh, regarding that configuration, I'm not understanding. Any exterior lighting? Um, proposed?
Uh, Roosevelt.
Okay. Uh, any exterior mechanicals?
We're gonna take from existing building. We have an extra meter that was installed, a gas meter that was installed, and then when the one had expanded. There's an extra meter form, so we're just gonna switch it over to this this building.
Okay.
And the water's gonna come from the existing building.
A- any office space associated with the.
Probably an office, maybe ten by ten for the rental office, rental park.
Okay, uh, I suppose all I would, you know, caution related to that is is the location of. The mechanicals as related to the adjacent residential activity, which Grandpa knows through a little buffer, but that's that's the root of, I think, that. Section will violate the question associated with it. And lastly, uh. I think the gist of the application indicates it's, uh, I don't want to, because I'll take that back, uh. Architectural style um, of this building is intended to be gonna match existing. Obviously onsite today, okay. That's all I have for questions.
Okay. Any uh, questions from the board? Or comments?
Just want to put question, I'm sure the answer is. No, but is there any, you storing vehicles there, you be doing any vehicle servicing?
No.
Anything else from the board? All right, um, many uh, town officials have any questions or comments? Um, any public questions or comments? So. Let me just see your list here. All right, so you've gotten. The. Comments from Town Planner and DPW. You'll seek to address those and submit revisions. Um, if we put this on for. The same time on. August fifteen, is that sufficient time for you to get it in and allow them to?
I I think we would like to continue it to that available meeting space.
Okay.
Hopefully, we can uh. Get the percolation test done, um, uh, among the various other things and then take a look at the storm waters, Mr. Brown asked and uh. Uh, you can certainly hope to be able to hit that date, yes.
Okay, and I, you know, I would just. Um, remind you, you know, with. Summer and vacations and whatever, you know, the earlier you can get it in, the better, give time to. For people to look at it and. Get it, okay. All right, so do I hear a motion to continue the hearing for nine Wally Way to seven thirty PM on August fifteenth?
Dave's been assembled.
I hear a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Dave's been, I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Fort, I.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Have a good evening. All right. So last thing out here, the site plan review?
I believe so, yeah.
It's not, this is just.
You looked at it last time, nothing to be worried about right now.
Go ahead, sorry.
So, we are in receipt of a site plan review application for a two-family home at Nicholson Hill Road. Uh, if we. Envision, uh, John, was it the Waterman Farm, probably that Mike was calling, uh, calling his voice and I had. Okay, so we've got that White House on the corner that was, I think renovated in the past year, so, uh, and there's two vacant lots. Uh, as as you begin to mark up on the square section of the roadway. Uh, Mr. Barelli came before us. Uh, twice in recent months, uh, one for an ANR, uh, to join those two properties into one with adequate frontage and air for two family home. And then uh, at the, I think it was the second meeting, uh, to have an informal discussion about. I require my under zoning for separate water and sewage uh, for two family homes. At our last meeting, I believe I provided the clarification that we received from uh, Town Council, which has led to the production of what we see here. Where we do have fundamentally separate uh, systems for each unit. Um, so as site plan review, uh, during title for us to uh, receive this and review and see if it can. Zoning. Done, if you don't mind, I'll keep on going.
Uh, you 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 probably have a stronger gossamer.
So, the plan uh, has the required contents. Um, to be shown, uh, we're complying with the required setbacks out there, you don't have any cyclical issues. Um, there are other filings associated with uh, the work extent that we see here, including. A conservation, I find that I think is to be heard, uh, it's early in August. If I recall correctly, uh, and there's also a stormwater component for this as a as a two-family home. Uh, and we are over the eighth threshold. John, I'll let you pick up from there if you.
Sure, I I'd be happy to, uh, again, you know, the the site, as you know, is Nicholson Hill Road and and uh. There are some fairly significant slopes across the site, um, as well as the aforementioned wetlands on uh, both the northwest. And to the easterly portion of the property, uh, the proposed building footprint as as a duplex unit is is, you know, fairly large. It's it's a single story and it's not, uh, you know, it's larger than your typical single family home, you know, particularly if it's a two-story uh. Colonial or what have you, so uh, you know, there there are some issues related to grading the site out, as you can no doubt uh. Tell, uh, particularly as the the and, you know, the road itself is is fairly steep, um. You know, we've managed to situate the the house, um, and, you know, install, uh, you know, schematically a driveway that's graded. Uh, at a relatively moderate slope, uh, compared to a lot of the uh, surrounding uh, terrain. But I think it's at about seven percent of memory serves, but uh, in order to accommodate the fairly large uh. Building footprint, um, you know, we are chasing the grade for uh, an inordinate amount of uh, you know, distance. And these are, you know, maximum three to one slopes and uh, quite frankly, in the area of the schematic septic system uh. Layout there, they're at two to one, so you know, a- as Mr. Goddard mentioned, there there are some fairly significant issues. Were, you know, relating to the uh, you know, site disturbance, um, you know, erosion, uh, and and we're. You know, o- other than some swale on the, you know, westerly side of the driveway, we've done, you know. Little to this point to try and address the the concerns regarding, uh, you know, stormwater runoff, uh, you know, it's. It's going to be challenging uh, on this site regardless, but I'm I'm sure there are, you know, some things we can do to try and, uh, you know. Satisfy the requirements, uh, to, you know, better than than what's shown here, and a lot of this was, um, you know. Trying to, you know, proof of concept, if you will, we're we're trying to work it through and and for the reasons that I mentioned, uh, there there are some significant challenges. You know, we are, and obviously, the Conservation Commission will will get a bite of the apple too, but you know, we are showing work, you know, well within the. The buffer zones that, uh, you know, are are going to have to be, uh, you know, discussed, um, and see if we can't, uh, you know. Meet the requirements and, uh, you know. Try try and come up with that, you know, a- as uh, balancing the issues at hand, try and come up with a a plan that that tries to satisfy as many, uh, you know. Disparate requirements as we can, um, so that's a short take on our expansion of what Mr. Goddard had introduced.
So, go ahead, John.
I was gonna say, if I can, uh, hard to lift up a piece of the puzzle, so we are also in receipt of an application for a stormwater management permit at this site. Uh, with some limited coordination, uh, with Arlevic Associates. The anticipation is that, uh, as a public hearing, we'll be able to open that up at our August meeting, um, but. In, well, two years back, we pulled stormwater out of zoning, so site plan review. Review parameters are under zone, um. I believe, uh, I I'd suggest perhaps that we, um. Take the opportunity uh, to carry this discussion forward, um, as. The conservation has a proverbial bite of the apple, and as we have the opportunity to manage the the stormwater component. But I'll, I'll leave it with board's preference and and the applicant to to examine that.
Yeah, I mean, this is. Yeah, I mean, this is. Bit different than our usual, the way it's usually presented to us, but our, our general practice has been. When we have something in front of us and, and it still needs conservation input and it may change, um, and then you have the stormwater application and things may change. Uh, it probably makes sense, there's no sense of urgency because it's not, nothing's gonna happen until all those things are completed.
Agreed.
Um, we might as well just sort of keep this a little coming along here and, and. Um, deal with it, put it on with the stormwater. Um, and then take the temperature is where it takes standard conservation at that one time.
That is fully our intent, absolutely.
Okay. All right, so we will, um, do I hear a motion? Or actually, this is not, this is just a, no, this isn't such a.
Oh, no, in this case, this, this piece right here, this site language.
All right, so we will put it on uh, the agenda for the next meeting. And um, and then assuming we do both that and then stormwater management, open that up at the next meeting. Okay. All right.
Hey.
Thank you. Good to see you guys.
Yes, absolutely.
Um. All right. Um. Okay. Uh, buddy, they, oh, it's in everybody's, okay, perfect, so we don't have to do this. Now, but we kind of do have the, the next one, uh, I suppose, um. Though I spoke that, September fifth. Um. Is that a, let's just talk about September fifth, September nineteenth, are those doable dates for? For folks?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, so.
I took a quick look at it prior to the meeting and everything looks okay when it comes to voting and school calendar, at least for the local. Um, the only concern I have is November twenty first, that's the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week. That's usually my pie making night. You know, other people go on vacation, you know. So you can get pie the next week.
All right, um.
Can we, can we keep this, can we put, move this forward to the next meeting and go over this pie thing again? I need to do a little research.
Yeah, I think, you gotta find out what kind of.
Yeah, that's, it comes into play.
It's Thanksgiving, so it's gonna be, you know, apple.
So, all right, so, um, I'll go through. Um, I mean, I know that, I, I can already tell you, June eighteen, I'm not gonna be here. If it gets March twelfth, I probably won't be here. Um, so, um, I'll go through it and we can talk about it at the next meeting, but I just wanted to make sure at least the beginning stuff is fine. Um, we'll try to finalize it for the next meeting. Okay. At the birthday gift, this is, this is a birthday gift right here, before eight o'clock. Do I hear your motion?
I'm just gonna mumble on that a little bit.
If you just pick the time as well.
You know, when you get old, you just time to look at time a little differently. Actually, I simply forgot what he asked me, and make a motion to close the meeting.
Dave Spina second.
All right, I'll prepare to say, ah, all right, all right. I'll have a good night.